All right, please, uh, call meeting order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Evening, everyone, and welcome. Tom, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Kelly.
Present.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Baskin. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom, and just for the audience's information, because Councilman Pashusta is remote, we're gonna be having a roll call on every, every, uh, item, so, uh, looking for, or to a, uh, someone to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Present, or, aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Yeah, we're...
Joyce, can you try and say something for us? We're testing if we can hear you.
Speaker's not working, we can't hear Joyce.
Yeah, we still can't hear her.
Joyce got the right speaker. She is not muted.
Try again, Joyce.
No.
Oh, I can hear it faintly. Yeah.
Sorry, folks, just a little technical difficulty here.
Anyone know IT?
Yeah. Any IT people in the audience?
See if we can get the speaker to work.
Well, Tom, can you, can we ever give you a thumbs up now, and then we can just move on with, uh, awards and recognitions, and this is kinda the, this is the good stuff of the meeting. So we're okay with the roll call and the, uh, adoption of the agenda? Approving our minutes, looking for a motion approving the minutes from our March seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Tom? Joyce will give us thumbs up.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Very good, thanks, Tom. Item number three is under recognitions and awards. We have a proclamation from the American Association, or for the American Association of University of Women, and I will read that. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the American Association of University of Women's story began in eighteen eighty-one, when a small group of female college graduates banded together to open the doors for women's career advancement and to encourage more women to pursue higher education, and whereas the AAUW has supported the academic achievements of many thousands of scholars, from scientist Marie Kiri, the first woman to win a Nobel Prize, to astronaut Judith Resnick, the second woman in space, and whereas the Austin branch of AAUW was founded in nineteen thirty-seven to support education for women and girls, and whereas the AAUW advocacy efforts have propelled countless new laws, including the Equal Pay Act, first proposed in nineteen forty-five and finally passed in nineteen sixty-three, the Title IX Amendment in nineteen seventy-two, the Family Medical Leave Act in nineteen ninety-three, the Lily Ledbetter Fair Play, Fair Pay Act in two thousand nine, and the Paycheck Fairness Act, which was passed by the US Representatives in two thousand nineteen but is awaiting action in the Senate, and whereas the AAUW mission is to advance gender equity for women and girls through research, education, and advocacy, and now therefore I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, as the American Association of University Women's, Women Days in Austin, Minnesota." And Sue Gruel would like to come forward and grab the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I'm gonna be presenting too. And when is that state meeting, Sue, for the AAUW? Next, it's a couple of weeks? April twenty-sixth, on my calendar? Hold on.
Sorry, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you to that powerful organization, thank you. Moving on to, uh, more, more good tidings here. Austin High School wrestler, wrestler Sam Winkles, you wanna come forward and if you bring your parents too, that's great, might as well have a proud parent moment. Uh, Sam Winkles, I met over there before the meeting started. Uh, he is an all-conference wrestler. He has a hundred career wins, which is a hundred more than Councilmember Fisher ever had in wrestling. Right up here. All-state participant, second place in the heavyweight at state, and, uh, section one AAA wrestler of the year. Sam Winkles also plays football, I understand he's an amazing leader, and, uh, congratulations to the parents for raising such a fine young man, and Sam, thanks for making Austin proud. So Sam Winkles, senior at Austin High School, graduating soon, congratulations, everybody. You wanna say some things, I'll be down for a picture.
Take him down, Sam, take him down.
He snapped me like a twig. All right. Also more recognitions. We have Brent Dowell, a junior at Austin High School. Brent, can you come, come forward, please? He is a swimmer, all-conference, all-state, section one A, swimmer of the year, hundred-yard back, uh, backstroke state champion. Uh, I did the backstroke at the Austin High YMCA swim team back in the day. Forty-nine seconds, and, yeah, that's crazy talk. That was like three minutes. Awesome high school pool record for the one-hundred-yard backstroke. So congratulations on your year, and you're just a junior. Your competition last year, he's a senior, you have one more year, is it, is this gonna be another year of championship, or is there somebody that's a sophomore coming up the way? Goals to win again. Right on. Well, congratulations on your swimming career thus far, and thanks for making Austin, uh, look good. Thank you.
Mayor's getting a workout just running.
Had to get him a little trapdory.
That's the point.
All right, more recognition. Austin is just, uh, filled with folks that are doing, doing good work, uh, in the sports world. We have Derek Han. Uh, Derek is the head coach of the men's basketball team at Riverland. Uh, attended the NJCAA National Tournament for a third time in four years. They defeated Genesee with seventy-four to seventy win, their, end their season in the national tournament. They finished thirty and four overall, the third time, that's this year, third time in the past four seasons they reached a thirty-win mark. I did tell Derek that I might be the bad luck charm for the Riverland boys in their men's basketball team, 'cause the one game I went to, actually it could've been Craig Clark, too, he was there, one of us is the bad luck charm, 'cause they were undefeated until we got there. But one thing, if you watch Coach Han coach, one thing comes to mind, it is, well, I think stroke, is one thing, but the, the level of passion, it's that word, that, he is on fire on those sidelines. And so you got a great group of young men that are doing great things at Riverland, and congratulations on your year. I wish, uh, maybe I hadn't showed up, 'cause you would've been, still be undefeated, but there's, there's gonna be next year, too, so I'll be down for a picture. Thank you. Other team, congratulations. The team is home on breaks, they couldn't make it, so otherwise, we'd put them anyway, but, tell them thank you. All right, anybody else winded? Uh, moving on to item number four is the consent agenda, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number five, moving on to bid openings and awards. Item number five is a resolution receiving bids for tree removal. Uh, Jason Seahan.
Honorable Mayor and Council, um, City of Austin held a bid opening for this second round of contract tree removals on Friday, February twenty-eighth. We received twelve bids for this project, which includes tree removal, uh, stump grinding, as well as ground restoration for four hundred trees. The bid specifications also identify, um, the possibility to increase the number of trees by fifty percent, making it six hundred total trees, based on a mutual agreement between the city and the contractor. Um, bid summary, I mean, we received twelve bids, they were all very competitive, this is good news that we're getting all these bids. Um, we, we reviewed all the bids, we, uh, I interviewed both of the lowest bidders, and I've consulted with our city attorney to clarify that council has the authority to award a bid to the bidder deemed most capable of performing the full contract on time and according to expectations. This can be determined, de, sorry, de, determined by understanding the bidder's responsibility, skills, workforce, and overall experience. This does not always mean that staff recommends, uh, awarding the bid to the lowest bidder. And so after careful review of the bids received, staff has determined that the best interest of the city is to award the bid to Olson Timber Company, who is the second lowest bidder, uh, bid received, uh, but it's only about twelve hundred, twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars more than the lowest bid. Um, we understand this might be a unique circumstance, uh, to ask council to award the bid to, uh, the second lowest bid received, but our found, our findings are based on the bidder's experience, equipment, and capabilities to, to complete the full contract according to expectations as well as on time. This is a big job, this is, uh, upwards of six hundred trees with the stump removals and the ground restoration. The budget, based on staff's recommendation, would be, uh, from a generous, uh, grant from the Hormel Foundation, ninety-one thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Uh, capital improvement revolving fund, which the City of Austin allocated, uh, funding towards, um, tree removals, would be an, um, a fifty percent match, ninety-one thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, and again, if the city and the contractor can agree upon, um, increasing the numbers to six hundred trees, this contract could go from four hundred to six hundred trees, based on mutual agreement. Um, at this point, staff's recommendation is to recommend city council award the bid to Olson Timber Company in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good, thank you, Jason. Appreciate your thoughtfulness on this bid. Council, any questions for Mr. Seahan?
Jason, if we bump it to six hundred trees, does that extend the five-day week timeline, or would they do it within that timeline still?
So we did put in the bid specifications, if we do extend to the six hundred trees, then we would consider extending the timeline of the entire project.
Okay.
Uh, this particular company estimates four hundred trees would be five weeks, six hundred trees would be eight weeks.
Okay.
Total time for that company.
Anything else for Mr. Seahan? I was looking for a resolution for item number five. So moved.
Second.
All right, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Pashusta. Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to item number six is a resolution receiving bids for Oakland Avenue West Trail Project. Stephen?
Yes, this trail will go from the new bridge over I-90 West to the storage units, and it will help serve an area of town that currently was not served prior to the bridge reconstruction project last year. We had six bidders on the project. Hanson Hauling and Excavating was the low bidder at a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh, again, we have a Hormel Foundation grant that will pay a portion of the construction and engineering staff time on the project, which would be sixty-five percent of the project cost, up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar max, and the remaining funds will come from our Keppel Improvement Fund forty-nine. With that, we'd recommend awarding this bid to Hanson Hauling and Excavating.
Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions on item number six? If not, looking for a resolution awarding the bid to Hanson Hauling?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Pashusta. Uh, Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
I'm gonna do motion passes five zero, 'cause it appears Joyce has been lost.
All right, thank you, Tom. Item number seven is a resolution receiving bids for Nature Center Trail Project. Jason or Stephen? Jason?
Uh, Honorable, Honorable Mayor and, uh, Council, uh, we conducted a bid opening on April second for asphalt trail construction at the J.C. Hormel Nature Center. Uh, work will consist of grading and excavation, culvert replacement, trail paving, and trail restoration. Really wanna give a huge shout-out to the engineering department for all their help, uh, preparing the bids and, um, and, and basically bringing this project home so that we could go out to bid. Um, the project, let's see, we received six bids, which is great news. Um, the project would be funded by a Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission Grant of eighty percent of the project, and Friends of the Hormel Nature Center will cover the remaining twenty percent. Staff's recommendation is to, uh, award the bid, award the project to Yuland Brothers in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand, six hundred thirty dollars and zero cents. They were the low bid in this, uh, project.
Excellent. Thanks, Jason. Council, any questions for item number seven? Looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes, resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight's resolution receiving bids for Nature's Ridge, Fourth Street, and Utility Project. Stephen?
Yes, this is a unique project for us out in the Nature's Ridge development, where we'd be building the infrastructure for Fourteenth Avenue Northeast, a segment of Fourteenth Avenue Northeast and Nineteenth Street Northeast. Uh, with this infrastructure project, it would open up the development of thirty lots in the Nature's Ridge subdivision. Uh, the base bid or low bidder on the project was JJD Companies LLC out of Blooming Prairie. Uh, we had a base bid and multiple alternates on the project. Uh, the base bid would be the main bulk of the work to construct the roadway, underground utilities, and site grading. Alternate number one is related to previous phases of the Nature's Ridge development that, uh, are currently missing street lighting. Phase one was to develop a price for adding street lighting to those previous phases. Alternate number two is adding sidewalk to a segment of Nature's Ridge One. Um, you may recall, a couple of years ago, we at the city added sidewalk to Twentieth Street out in this neighborhood to help make some sidewalk connections. This would also, uh, make a sidewalk connection. Alternate, that's alternate number two, and then alternate number three would be, again, um, to pave asphalt wearing course on previous phases of the project that have not yet been completed. So what we would recommend for you tonight would be to award the base bid, which would be funded through assessments to the adjacent properties, those thirty lots that are developed, and also request that you award alternate number two. You may recall that our standard policy is the first time sidewalk goes into an existing property, the city covers that cost. So alternate number two would be paid out of our, um, capital improvement fund, uh, for the local dollars, but then, uh, the major, the base bid, which is the majority of what we're recommending here tonight, would be assessed back to those thirty properties. So we'd recommend awarding base bid and alternate number two in the amount of nine hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents to JJD Companies LLC.
Very good, thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions, Mr. Lang? Item number eight. Looking for a resolution awarding the bid?
So moved.
Second.
Thomas?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is, uh, under the, uh, open, bid, uh, openings and awards, is receiving bids for twenty twenty-five asphalt street recon, uh, reconstruction project. Stephen?
Yes, all of our projects were combined into one overall project for our street reconstruction program. This includes Sixth Street Northeast, Twenty-first Avenue Southwest, Sixth Avenue and Eighteenth Drive Northeast, and then a mill and overlay on Twenty-Fifth Street Southwest. Altogether, uh, bids came in with Yuland Brothers being the low bidder at one million six hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents. We'll use, uh, different funding sources for this project. Adjacent property owners will be assessed. We'll use Capital Improvement Fund, Wastewater Treatment Plant Fund, and the Stormwater Utility Fund, and with that, we'd recommend awarding this to the low bidder, Yuland Brothers.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions on this item? Looking for a resolution for item number nine?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under public hearings, item number ten is a public hearing on street improvements on Oakland Avenue and First Avenue Southwest, Project twenty-five one-oh-three. The amount to be assessed is one million nine thousand five, three hundred fifty-three dollars, eleven cents, at five point seven percent for fifteen years. Uh, Stephen, you had a little more of a presentation on this one.
Yes, during the improvement hearing a month ago, we went through in detail the work that was gonna be included in this project. We skimmed over the assessment part of it, and now I wanna go through that in a little bit more detail. Um, and I have some updates from what you have in your backup material. If, if you go to the project funding page, which is on, I, um... It would be in your PDF. Thirty-eight. Uh, funding for this project, we've, we're updating it as we go. We're looking to bid this project here, eh, within the next month or so, but we have, uh, state and federal grants in the amount of seven point six eight million dollars. We'll use municipal state aid funds of about five point two one million dollars. Sanitary sewer fund, we need about one point seven million. We have assessments on the project that are just over a million dollars for a total project cost of fifteen point six million dollars. And for the project, as with our standard policy, uh, property owners will be assessed based on their frontage to the street. If it is a residential parcel, the, the rate is sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents per foot of frontage. For a commercial property, it is ninety-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents per foot of frontage. Uh, sidewalk assessments, uh, we are not assessing for sidewalk on this project, it is all going to be replaced as part of the project cost. There are about a hundred and seventy-eight properties on the, both Oakland Avenue and First Avenue that we've sent out assessment notices to. Um, a lot of lots in this area are forty-five feet wide, so if it, uh, many of those lots have been consolidated into multiples, but if you still own a forty-five-foot lot and you have a residential parcel on that residential use, your assessment is approximately a little over three thousand dollars for this project. If it's a commercial lot, that assessment for that same forty-five-foot lot is four thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, because we have a different rate, whether it's residential or commercial. And then there are parcels that can, you know, I, I mentioned, there are parcels that are, um, uh, added together, but there are areas where folks will actually own a whole block of frontage. In those cases, if it's a commercial block, it would, it could be up to a twenty-six thousand dollar assessment for this project. So wide range of assessments. Um, you could also look at a, a property like McDonald's, where they have, uh, property on both Oakland and First Avenue, they're getting assessed for both of them, so it's even greater than that twenty-six thousand dollar assessment based on our policy. Uh, as with other projects, the, um, we have different assessment options. One thing we did talk about, about this project is because it is a multi-year project, property owners' assessments are all gonna be locked in based on this twenty twenty-five rate. They're, um, even though their phase of construction may occur in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, they'll be locked into the rate that we're giving them today. They won't see any future increases due to rate increases that may happen in the future. So when they receive their assessment notice, uh, it'll be in the fall, usually in August of the year of their street reconstruction. They will have, uh, four options to pay that amount when they receive it. They could pay the amount in full by October thirty-first without interest. They could pay at least fifty percent, and the remainder would go on their taxes. When it goes on their taxes, it's spread out over fifteen years with interest. That was option number two. Option number three is they could make no payment by October thirty-first. The entire amount would then go on their taxes, again, spread over fifteen years with interest. We're anticipating the interest rate on that fifteen-year timeline would be five point seven five percent. And lastly, if they made certain age and income guidelines, they could choose to have that assessment deferred on their property taxes until sometime in the future when the property is sold. We have, there's different criteria, that program is run through our finance department, but there is an eligible opportunity there for people just to defer it with interest on their taxes. Um, we have, we're trying to get information out about the project, we have different ways that people can stay engaged with the project. Our, our best resource for that is to sign up for our, um, text alerts on the project. We would encourage everyone to sign up for those. We have a QR code that folks could scan if interested to, to sign up for those text alerts, and, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to council for the other, any questions or the remaining items on this, related to this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lang. This is a public hearing, so we'll start with council. Any questions, Mr. Lang, or comments on this project?
I would just only add that if you live or do business on this street, highly recommend signing up with that QR code for updates, 'cause it's gonna be a long project, and it's helpful to know when the next phase is starting, or, you know, they might have to close the street one day for this or whatever, those texts should come through on there, so I highly recommend.
Well said, Posma. All right, we'll open it up to public comments. Anybody here, uh, in the audience wishing to speak on item number ten here on this, uh, this project? I know we have a lot of caneball and pickleballers here, so it's hard to tell which ones here on the project, which ones here for the pickleball, caneball. Any public comment on this project? All right. Hearing none, looking for a, uh, any, any written objections, Stephen?
No, no written objections.
Looking for a motion to adjourn and continue the hearing, uh, on those properties for which written, they didn't get any. So we're looking for just the resolution on declaring the costs, then.
So moved.
Second.
So resolution declaring the cost, which is item number ten D, uh, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number ten E is a resolution adopting the assessment role.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Under petitions and requests, we have item number eleven requesting approval of the fats, oils, and grease and point-of-sale ordinance. Stephen?
I do not have anything to add, besides what we've talked about at previous work session in councils, but I'll answer any questions council may have.
Council, any questions, Mr. Lang, on this item? Looking for a motion for the preparation of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eleven B for adoption of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes five zero, Your Honor. This is the second reading, so just record a majority.
Thanks, Tom. Item number eleven C, summary of publication of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Next, Tom. Item number twelve is resolution approving parks and recreation and forestry comprehensive plan. Jason?
Honorable Mayor and Council, briefly, uh, this, the comprehensive parks, recreation, and trails master plan was brought to council at a work session at the last meeting on March seventeenth. Council asked us to bring it back this evening, uh, and staff's recommendation is that council adopt the comprehensive park, recreation, and trails master plan as submitted. Just to point out, there were a few suggested edits from the work session and prior to the work session, so, uh, while those were minor, they were at the beginning of the document, City Administrator Craig Clark, who's been involved with this process... Um, uh, City Administrator Craig Clark, who's been involved with this process as well, he and I reached out to MSA to make sure that those, those changes were consistent throughout the end of the, the rest of the document. And so those were the only changes. Other than that, everything is the same, uh, in your packet that you saw at the last work session.
Excellent. Thanks, Jason. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Sehan? Looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Last meeting, Joyce Pashusta read her resignation letter to the, uh, audience and counsel. So item number thirteen is just accepting, uh, Councilmember Pashusta's resignation, declaring a third ward vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is resolution approving the City of Austin and Austin Fire Association Fire Service Contract. That's in your backup material, looking for resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number fifteen is a, uh, motion approving the request for contingency funding for repairs to a retaining wall at the Veterans Pavilion. Jason?
Thank you. After the twenty-twenty-five budget was submitted, staff was made aware of a failing retaining wall at the Veterans Pavilion, um, between the pavilion and the, uh, band shell, basically. Um, the retaining wall is in very bad shape, and staff is recommending that we replace it as soon as possible. Um, City Administrator Craig Clark was, uh, briefed and updated on the retaining wall condition and proposed a solu- or we proposed a solution, so he asked that we bring this to City Council for funding. Um, also Director of Administrative Services, Tom Dankert, recommended the funding for this project come from contingency funds. Um, in your packet tonight, there's a detailed description of the project's scope. I'll just do a quick, uh, brief overview. Um, I do want to say much of this work, we will be able to compete, uh, complete in-house. Um, with the parks crew, uh, the streets and water, I'm sorry, the streets and sewer departments have also offered, uh, to assist, and we very much appreciate, um, uh, those departments for their support. So, a brief summary is we will remove the existing retaining wall. Uh, along with that comes removing the, the lower portion of the sidewalk and handrail, uh, all of the filter, uh, behind the retaining wall. Uh, we would contract out the pore of a new retaining wall using decorative standard concrete wall. So, we feel that the standard concrete color will be a good match for the, um, pavilion. And then the decorative is a, kind of a stamp that'll almost look like, uh, layered bricks. And our hopes that it'll kind of come to a close match to the building, but almost more importantly, it's not a smooth surface that might encourage graffiti. And we're in a, uh, we're, we're experiencing a lot of graffiti in, in Austin the last couple of years. So, um, then we would also, while we're, um, doing the work, work with the sewer department to divert two downspouts, um, underneath where the, the retaining wall would be to connect to the storm drain. Um, we, we believe that this is part of the reason this fail- this retaining wall failed. One, it was built with landscape block, which isn't really designed for retaining walls. Two, uh, the, the, the water from the roof actually comes out between the wall and the building. So all that water that's coming in that area could push that, that, that wall out. Um, and then after that, we would replace the sidewalk in-house, uh, replace the guard rail, rail, uh, filter, put some black soil on top, and we would install some low-maintenance, um, native, low-water, uh, required landscaping. Um, staff's recommendation to council is to authorize staff to proceed with this project using contingency funds in the estimated amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Excellent. Thanks, Jason. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Sehan?
Uh, Jason, another timing question from me, and I know especially when you're pouring concrete, it's always weather-dependent, but do we think that this can get done by the Fourth of July?
Yes, that is, that is the plan.
Cool.
Uh, thank you. Uh, nothing, no further questions, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Reso- motion passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number sixteen is resolution approving a contract for engineering services for realignment of the southeast trunk sewer. Stephen?
Yes, at a previous work session, we talked about the needs in the southeast area of town. This is one proposal from WHKS in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars to review the southeast trunk sewer that runs through the Kaufman Park and Wild, and, uh, uh, what's the elementary school down there?
Woodson.
Woodson, thank you. So, we, we have multiple projects planned for this neighborhood in the, in our five-year CIP, and we feel that is important to review the trunk sewer alignment, the capacity, and determine if the current route is the best route, or look for better routes for the, before we construct the roadways above them in future years. So, I think this is an important study to also look for things that may be causing sewer backups in this neighborhood as they relate to the trunk sewer. So with that, we'd recommend this proposal from WHKS to review the southeast trunk sewer.
Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions? Looking for resolution for item number sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number seventeen is resolution approving a drainage study of the Ellis and Sixth Avenue Southeast ditch. Stephen?
Yes, this is the second neighborhood that we talked about during that meeting. Where neck, in twenty-twenty-six, we have about three-point-five million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements planned for the Ellis Ditch and Sixth Avenue Southeast area. We feel it is important to complete a study to ensure that we're spending those dollars wisely as they relate to, um, flooding from the Ellis Ditch, sanitary sewer backups that we seen this past summer during the high-water event. Uh, we'll look at the roadway condition, and we'll look at possible upstream storage if there are any opportunities to hold some of that water and prevent impacts downstream. So it's a, a very, it's a larger, more comprehensive study for this area. And, um, the proposal that we received from WHKS was in the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars for this study, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Counsel, any questions? Looking for resolution approving the drainage study?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eighteen is resolution approving an amendment to the Minnesota DOT limited-use permit for the Oakland Avenue West Trail. Stephen?
Yeah, this is the trail that you just approved earlier tonight for Oakland Avenue West. This is a, um, amendment to an existing agreement that allows us to complete work within the MinDOT right-of-way, and we'd request approval of this amendment.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for resolution approving the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Thomas?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is a motion reviewing a variance, uh, for removal of green space from Sterling Pharmacy. Holly?
Mayor and council members, at the April first, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a request from the petitioner, Aestrob Properties LLC for a variance from City Code Section eleven-point-zero-two-three, which requires twenty percent green space in a B-two commercial zoning district. The petitioner proposes to remove the green space to create additional parking needed for peak traffic increase due to the merger of two pharmacies into one. The current Sterling drug would be vacated for the former Medicap location, which was bought by Aestrob. After review, the planning commission with five members present recommended approving the variance with the condition that the petitioner work with planning department on aesthetic improvements, uh, related to the removal of the existing green space, and that it be contingent upon adding capacity to their current drive-through area, um, which was not something addressed by the planning commission. That's a separate issue. The petitioner asserts that they must do both or will remain at their current location. Um, the vote was as follows, five in favor and zero opposed. The planning commission made the following findings regarding to this, regarding this request. At the ver- the request's variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance, that the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated, that there are circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, that the landowner intends to use the land in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the ordinance, and that there are circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, uh, and that it will be used in a reasonable manner, uh, not permitted by the ordinance. Do you have any questions about this particular item?
Thank you. Holly, counsel, any questions? If not, looking for a motion for item number nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number twenty is a motion reviewing a variance for a side yard setback for a shed by Brienne and David Wolfe. Holly?
Uh, at the same meeting of the planning commission, the commission reviewed a request from petitioners, uh, for a twelve-and-a-half foots, uh, for a variance from the twelve-and-a-half-foot setback on corner side yards located with, in, within an R-one single-family residential district. The proposed structure would be set back five feet from the north property line, again, instead of the required twelve-and-a-half feet. After review, the planning commission with five members present recommended approving the variance with the condition that the structure be a minimum of fifteen feet from the neighbor's driveway. The vote was five to zero, and the commissioners made the same findings as they did in the previous request.
Very good. Thank you, Holly. Counsel, any questions on item number twenty?
Holly, are you sure that the petitioner filled the form out correctly?
Oh, boy. Looking for a motion, item number twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number twenty-one is a resolution accepting these two donations, a thousand dollars, uh, donated by the Morning Lions Club to the Lions Park, and two-hundred-dollar gift donation from Maynard and, uh, Robyn Ackerman for the twenty-twenty-five flower program. Thank the, thank them, both parties for their generosity. Looking for a motion or resolution accepting those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, lastly, item number twenty-two is, uh, motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. Twenty-two A is, the address is eight-thirteen, eighth app, southwest, the Bryan property. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Now, we will be, uh, addressing pickleball, I know, uh, for sure in the work session. But is there any other, uh, citizens in the audience wishing to address the council on items that weren't on this agenda? All right. Uh, Craig, we got some reports from department heads?
Uh, yeah, I, we have a city, county, and school district meeting on next Monday, the fourteenth, at the McVale Room, where we met previously at four-thirty. If there's any agenda items counsel would like to see, please let us know. Um, otherwise, we look forward to seeing there. And Julie and Stephen have a couple of items, I believe.
Julie, you got the microphone? We both do. Go for it, Julie.
Um, I just wanted to give the public, um, some heads up. You're going to be hearing a little bit more from the Austin Public Library here in the next few weeks. We have very exciting news. We're getting a new integrated library system. The last one we got was in two thousand and two, so our current system is twenty-two years old. So, what we're getting is going to be new and wonderful. However, it's a little terrifying to be turning off our system and starting something new. So, the week of April twenty-eighth, the library will be closed on Monday as we make sure everybody knows what they're doing and that the staff are ready to go. The system will be shut down, and then, starting April twenty-ninth on Tuesday, we'll be open our regular hours. But what you're going to be able to do on Tuesday and Wednesday until the system is brought back up on May first, on Thursday, is going to be somewhat limited. So, be watching for announcements. If you have your library card, you can come on in on Tuesday and Wednesday and check out books or materials from the library. But there won't be any holds. You won't be able to request. We aren't going to be able to make changes to your system or to your account because that system will be shut down. Nothing will be due. There'll be no overdue fees. Um, it's, the meeting rooms will still be open. We're going to have events going on that week. But, um, just a little bit of a heads up that that's coming, and we're going to be getting lots of information out, just short of smoke signals and skywriting.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. Stephen?
I just wanted to announce that our MS4 Stormwater Annual Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, at four PM here in the council chambers, and it is open to the public.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephen. Uh, City Council, let's start with, uh, Becky.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing. Mike?
I was driving down Oakland today and saw utility markers going crazy. So, that project is getting ready to start real soon, it looks like, so heads up on that one. Um, and then I was at a meeting today where Trish Heron, uh, announced that she was stepping down as a county administrator to take a new job farther north, so just wanted to thank her for all the work that she's done from our county and worked with Austin. She's been, uh, there the whole time I've been on council. We have a great working relationship with the county, and wish them luck in finding somebody to fill her shoes so we can keep that going.
Thank you, Mike. Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Laura?
I want to remind folks that, um, Fourth Avenue Fest, our unofficial kickoff to summer, is on Wednesday, June fourth. It'll be, um, at Horace Austin Park, which is, uh, between the library and the pool. Um, nice night out celebrating the arts and, uh, healthy living in the community. I also want to say congratulations to Lynn Thompson, who recently accepted the position of Parks Supervisor. He'd been serving as a, uh, interim in that position for many months. And, um, thank you to Jason and the, uh, Parks Department for your, um, diligent, um, search, uh, for the right candidate, and I'm excited, uh, for that department. I should also mention the HR Director, uh, Josh Weichman participated in that, um, search. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, before I read the April anniversaries, I just want, you know, we were among, uh, really good athletes today, and I want to be sure and share with the council that I was involved in the Papa Shot for their, our city engagement for the final four. And out of a minute to try to put a little basketball in a little hoop, I, I made it four times.